But. I never. I don't know.
By the time they get to me.
Yeah.
We always.
Right, good question.
Poor.
You you get to answer. So and then move on.
Yeah.
And what do you?
There's too many.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh.
It's yours. You won't vote for me.
Well, right. Well, I have some point, yeah.
I'm not going. I'll make sense. If you are right. Just stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by its own right under God, in the gospel, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everybody. Uh, welcome to the Porter County Board of Representatives, December seventeenth, four meeting. Uh, we'll start with the consent agenda. Melanie?
Approval of payroll, August thirtieth and September thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Approval of claims, August twenty-ninth, September fifth, September twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Approval of minutes, August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. Waits and measures, monthly report, July sixteenth through August fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Memorial Opera House, artistic services agreements, as listed on the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Uh, Memorial Opera House. Oh, wait, whoa, whoa, whoa.
Next.
Where did you leave off, Melanie? I'm sorry, it was.
Number one of the commissioners.
I'm sorry. Oh, they, okay, you, alright, I apologize. We have an amendment to the employee handbook, uh, pertaining to a, uh, bereavement leave. The employee is entitled to an additional seven consecutive working days for a total of ten days of paid, uh, funeral leave upon the death of an employee's spouse, employee's child, employee's stepchild, if this child resides with the employee at the time of death, or an employee's parent, if the employee's parent resides with the employee at the time of death. I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, motion to approve new amendments to the employee handbook pertaining to bereavement. Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. U M R, uh, approval of, uh, twenty twenty-four modified health, uh, summary plan?
There was a, uh, this is a revision to the plan document itself. There was a typo within one of the, uh, scheduled benefits on a deductible, but this makes the change.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Skilman Projects update, Memorial Opera House. Morning.
Morning. Alright, so just a quick update on the Memorial Opera House project. We had the dedication on Friday, and I believe the only concern was the heat in the building. Uh, we are finishing the air conditioning this week. Uh, my scheduled startup is on Monday. I confirmed that as of this morning, so that will be ready for the big show next week. Um, other than that, we're just finishing up some miscellaneous punchless items in the building. We still have the hot system for the boilers that we were wrapping up into next week. Um, and then we have like some doors that were backordered that we're waiting to arrive, uh, next week, as well as the windows that'll arrive in about a month and a half. I'm still confirming a date, but I will share that with commissioners once we do have a firm date of when those windows will arrive.
For all intents and purposes, we're ninety-nine point nine percent finished.
Yes, ninety-nine point nine is an accurate number.
Okay. Continue, I'm sorry.
Okay. Um, other than that, we just have a presentation on the landscaping quote from Lakeshore Landscaping. We met them on site. They've designed a, a nice comparable, uh, design for the outside courtyard, um, well, well within budget for a total amount of forty-eight, four oh seven dollars and forty-one cents. Um, Joe, did you have any?
Yeah, we, we want to make sure that we get that under contract, um, so that way they can begin to work for next year.
I move that we approve, uh, the, uh, courtyard landscaping plan with Lakeshore Landscaping for, in the amount of forty-eight thousand, four hundred, seven dollars and forty-one cents.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign.
Thank you, thank you.
Continue. Highway Department. Morning.
Morning.
Highway Department, uh, construction has started, um, aggregate appears being installed. We have, uh, roughly another two weeks, ag, appears being installed, and then we will move into earthwork, uh, uh, earth moving. From there, we'll go into foundations, but, uh, we have roughly another two weeks. Things are moving along. Got things started and everything's underway. No issues, uh, in the background. We've got some middles, um, R F I's being answered by engineering and just moving along.
Great. Thanks, Bob.
Any questions by the board? Uh, jail.
Uh, jail project, uh, project number one, which is, uh, the roof replacement. The stamped and seam roof should be complete, demo should be completed by Friday of this week. Uh, the new panels will arrive on the twenty-third, which I believe is next weekend. They'll begin installation immediately. Things are moving along there.
Uh, video tech quote for, uh, video and S A S system is an amount of four hundred eleven thousand, four hundred fifty-three dollars?
Yes, so we received a quote. This is something we'd like to move up in project one. Uh, the breakout pricing, uh, for all the video tech, um, includes furniture, S A S upgrades, interior cameras, monitors, exterior cameras and satellite access. Uh, this will get the jail staff ready and in place before project two, which will be a lot of interior work. Where we don't want to disturb the satellite offices, um, and just have everything completed prior to project two going.
Yeah.
I move that we approve, uh, the quote for video and S A S system in the amount of four hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars with video tech.
Second.
And a motion is second, uh, I'm gonna move for discussion, uh, before the final vote. Uh, this is a substantial amount of money. Are we, are we, are we looking at other outfits that provide the same type of, uh, equipment?
I, I don't know that. I know the jail staff has kind of worked through different outfits. I can find that out for you.
Well. J- uh, Commissioner Biggs, part of the issue is with the video tech is there, there's an interface with the, uh, rest of the building of the proprietary software, so if we were to move away or legitimately be able to bid some of these things, we would have to be changing the whole internal setup. So that's
Yeah.
that's part of the, well, not part of, that is the issue with this upgrade right now.
Yeah, and we're upgrading components. We're not replacing.
Yeah, that's what concerns me is that much of the system that's in there is, is equipped, is being used as proprietary. It just kind of locks us into, you know, this is what it costs, take it or leave it. And, uh, but I, I would appreciate some more information back from them as to how that, how this agreement is set up.
Yes, a- and we, Scott Cherry and I walked through this estimate. We brought, um, video tech into our office and gone through the estimate with them to on, on previous estimates, and we planned to do the same for this one, to go and verify everything and kind of line by line, double check everything on their quotes, so, um, we're asking for approval to move forward in doing that with them as well.
Yeah, I just, we, we just really need to be careful, like, using anybody that has, that is telling us that, that this equipment and, and, and its, um, components are proprietary. We, we fell into that, that problem with this building and others years ago, and it, it costs us dearly. We, we just, you know, finally got out of it.
Yeah.
So, alright, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we had a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Health Department, corner veteran admin, uh, administrator, this patient, patient up.
Uh, thank you, commissioners. So, just to give you a quick update on the project, um, we are moving, uh, pretty rapidly on the, the project. Uh, we're actually ahead of schedule. Uh, Burton is making, uh, excellent progress without causing too much disruption, uh, to the working mechanics here, uh. So, they're currently painting, uh, the old voters, transforming that into the new veterans and new coroner's offices. They expect to be completed with all of that by the twenty-third of October. Um, we'll be mobilizing, um, and getting our, uh, departments relocated so that they can begin, uh, phase, uh, phase two demolition and construction, which we expect would be November twelfth. Um, that those have all moved up those timelines, so that's, that's good to hear. So, we were looking at August of last year, or next year, uh, for total project completion. We've now moved that up to, to beginning of June for that project, so.
Moving right along.
Yeah.
We're gonna be busy, uh, opening things back up in June of next year.
Yeah.
We have the, uh, garage, I think, is projected right around that time.
Yeah.
June of next year. Uh, trout glass and mirrors, uh, supply and install two new Stanley, uh, Magic Force operators, R H, to replace existing ones at the south entrance of the courthouse in the amount of six thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars.
So, this is, um, the eighty-eight actuators on the south door, uh, you push the button, the doors open. Those are both broken. Um, we kind of know, or think we know what, what's causing that, so, uh, hopefully we can fix that so it doesn't happen again. Um, but this isn't the first time that, that they've had problems with these doors, so, um, trout's in there, um, gonna be getting those fixed right away for us, so, but we.
That's the south end of the old courthouse?
Correct.
Those, those doors?
Yeah, push the button and the door opens, both of them.
Are they having to replace the entire door?
Just the actuator.
Just, yeah, okay. Cause I could say those, those doors have been there forever.
Yeah, yeah, they're quite heavy.
Yeah, I would say they're, they're, uh, are, they, would they be original?
I don't know. Well, I don't think they're original to the building. They're original to the, one of the remodels at some point.
The original ones probably would.
Probably were.
Uh, we have an ordinance pertaining to the energy, uh.
We're gonna need approval on that, I'm sorry.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the, um, the proposal with trout glass and mirror to supply and install two new Stanley Magic Force operators to replace the existing ones at the south entrance of the courthouse in the amount of six thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. And we have an ordinance pertaining to the Energy Conservation Block Grant Fund, uh, number ninety-one sixty-eight, second reading. I'll entertain a motion.
Move that we approve the ordinance, uh, number ninety-one sixty-eight, Energy Conservation Block Grant, Grant Fund on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. We have a purchase of an electric vehicle in the amount of sixty thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars for Facilities Department, paid for with the E E C B G grant. What is the E E C B G grant?
That is the Energy Efficient Conservation Block Grant. So, it's a federal grant from the U S Department of Energy. We received seventy-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. Um, it's a one hundred percent grant. Hundred percent of the money is going directly toward the cost for the installation of a, um, type-two, uh, dual charging unit, which will be, um, in our garage here, and then the purchase of a electric vehicle.
And what are we gonna use it for?
Well, we're gonna be using it to purchase the electric vehicle and the charging station.
No, I mean, what are we gonna use the vehicle for?
Oh, for facilities.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we, um, can I do both of these, Scott?
Yes.
Okay, I move that we approve the purchase of an electric vehicle in the amount of sixty thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. And the, um, installation of a charging station in the Porter County parking garage with circle R electric in the amount of eighteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-one, both to be paid for with the E E C B G grant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign.
I just want to thank.
All this buttoned up, uh, the charging station installed?
Um, we, we should be wrapping the charging station up in the next several weeks. Um, I was just reached out to the contractor to get a timeline. Um, we're hoping to get it done, started within the next two weeks.
And where would that be installed exactly?
That would be installed on what is called the second level, which is technically the first level, but it's one level down, I see, yeah.
I have a question. Is, it, does that spend the whole grant? Was the grant just specific to these two things?
Yes, cause it's seventy-nine thousand, five hundred. So, uh, and again, I'd want to thank Mary Jane for all her efforts on securing that grant for the county.
Well, and Brian also.
Oh.
Right, cause he got us the money. He figured that one out for us, so.
Thanks, Brian.
If there's any future grants, it might be nice to add one for the public.
Well, the, uh, we're working on public use of the charging station too, so, and we're, I'm also reached out to Nipco to discuss, um, opportunities for funding, um, charging stations for that as well.
That it, Joe?
Uh, that's it on that. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, V N A hospice presentation? Morning.
Good morning.
We have asked the, uh, V N A hospice to, uh, come before the board of commissioners to do a presentation, to give us a little insight of what, what you're all doing currently and.
And do you also want to talk about the money that you received in ARPA funds?
Sure, yeah, I have lots of information about that, just a little ways, I'm killing people here. Well, good morning. Thanks for this opportunity to update you on the V N A hospice of Northwest Indiana. Commissioner Biggs did invite me to come here and chat briefly about what the V N A hospice can do for people, for our neighbors and our whole community. I guess I'll start by mentioning what we've done for the community over the last fifty-four years.
Robert, could you give us your name?
My name is Robert Franco. I am president and CEO of the V N A hospice of Northwest Indiana.
Thank you.
Alright, sorry.
That's okay.
So, a- again, I'll start by mentioning what we've done for our community over the last fifty-four years. Since nineteen seventy, we've served tens of thousands of people and families through our home health, hospice care, Meals on Wheels, and our Medical Guardian programs. We retain only one of seven inpatient hospice facilities left in the entire state of Indiana. Last year alone, we served over seven hundred patients at hospice care, including a hundred and fifty-one veterans across the six county area. We also served over two hundred and twenty people in our palliative care program, nearly four hundred and fifty in our Meals on Wheels service, and over three hundred on our Medical Guardian, which is the I've fallen and I can't get up button, and have worked with nearly fifty kids in our Phoenix Center Bereavement Program. Every day, we serve over six hundred people across those programs, as one of Porter County's oldest and largest nonprofits. I, I think one of the hallmarks of the V N A, going back to our founder Laura Harding, has always been adaptability. Being able to adapt and swiftly change to meet the ever-changing needs of our community. We've added and taken on a number of programs over the years, and I'm here in front of you today as we're at yet another crossroads. The recent pandemic only exacerbated what was already a major shift in our industry, specifically hospice. The Medicare hospice benefit was enacted in nineteen eighty-two, and up till about ten to twelve years ago, it had been primarily operated by nonprofits, just like the V N A. They tended to be small to mid-sized organizations overseen by a volunteer board of do-gooders and who valued quality and compassion at the end of life. But let's also be honest that the benefit was created to save Medicare money, as we all know that the much of a person's healthcare spend happens in the last six to twelve months of life. Well, however, in the last decade, venture capital and private equity has moved into the industry and found ways to make hospice lucrative. They aren't as much concerned about the compassionate care and overall cost savings as was the original intent of the benefit, as they are about driving profits. And they've been very successful. Ten years ago, well over eighty percent of the hospices in this country were still run by nonprofits, but the, today, that number is estimated to be less than twenty percent. I've attached a reference, actually, I gave you the article, um, from the New Yorker from a couple of years ago, called How Hospice Became a For-Profit Hustle, that I would highly encourage you to read. It's sort of a long read, um, process, but it'll make your skin crawl. So, back to Commissioner Biggs's question about what can the V N A hospice do for our community today? Well, we're launching our Reimagine Aging Project to help solve a major gap in our healthcare system, and it looks like this. You're a working mom and you're, and a wife raising a family and building a career. You have an eighty-year-old mom who still lives alone, but has some memory loss issues, and is becoming more frail. She shouldn't be driving anymore, so you're taking her on trips to the doctor and pharmacy. You go shopping and you help pay her bills. Your boss has been kind and understanding, but you're starting to sort of fear for your job. Her doctors don't give you much information, if you even get to talk to them, about her condition or prognosis, other than to tell you, you're doing a great job and to keep it up. But you know you're exhausted, scared, and worried. Our reimagine aging, I get, just to be, one quick thing off of there, I get about three phone calls a week, um, from friends or friends of family about people that are in that very same situation, asking, what can you do to help? So, our reimagine aging initiative takes us into that gap to help with aging care coordination long before someone's even thinking about hospice. We'd really like to think about the last ten years of life and what sorts of services and resources can be available to families to help avoid that frustration. So, that may include aging care navigators, in-home remote monitoring, caregiver support, food nutrition support, and much more. Just this week, we're initiating a remote patient monitoring su- service using technology to better monitor vital signs and other key health indicators in real time, so we can be more proactive and responsive to avoid E R visits and hospitalizations. We're partnering with our local federally qualified health centers, Health Link and North Shore, to leverage their vast array of services to better support our senior population. We're engaging more with our clients on our Meals on Wheels program about basic health to better understand their challenges and being more responsive to the dangers of isolation, loneliness, and depression. Well, that all sounds wonderful, right? And exactly what many families need. However, paying for all of this is a challenge. There is no one funding mechanism to do this. So, we have to cobble together and bundle services to drive outcomes and create scale so that we can prove our value to payers, so that we can negotiate value-based contracts and shared savings partnership. That all takes considerable upfront capital and lots of human bandwidth to make that happen, which is exactly the situation we're in right now. As we know, this is our future and what the community needs from us. This is what we can do, and this is what we must do for our community. It's our role as a nonprofit safety net provider to meet this need, and if it's not us, then who? It certainly won't be our for-profit friends. So, thanks for this opportunity to share with you with what's going on with the V N A right now. I'm happy to answer any questions and talk to you a little bit about where we are with the ARPA funds as well, too.
Questions by the?
I, I would like to hear just, uh, just an update on where you are with ARPA.
Sure. So, we were, um, kindly granted about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in total in ARPA funds. Three hundred thousand of that was dedicated to our Meals on Wheels program, and another hundred and fifty thousand was dedicated for business development, um, to help us better nee- meet the needs of the community. So far, um, up to this point, in terms of the business development, we're working with two, um, health consulting groups, um, to help us with our reimagine aging initiative, um, Health Management Solutions and Jet, uh, which is a local company, Joel Troxel and his group. Um, so far, we've pulled down about fif- just over fifty thousand dollars, um, you know, of that hundred and fifty thousand, which leaves us about ninety-nine thousand, six hundred dollars left to go. Some of our future needs that we anticipate using, um, we're gonna launch some new strategic planning. Um, this year, we're gonna continue to do with our program expansion of this reimagine aging initiative of adding equipment, adding personnel, training, recruitment, um, including hiring of a, probably a physician or a nurse practitioner. Um, so we do anticipate being able to exhaust all of those funds, uh, pretty quickly. The Meals on Wheels, um, we, we continue to be challenged with the Meals on Wheels program right now. We have pulled down, uh, about sixty thousand, almost sixty-one thousand dollars, um, to help mitigate some of the losses that we've experienced with the program through the pandemic, that we do anticipate by the end of two thousand twenty-six, pulling down the other six, another sixty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars, which would bring that um, amount down to a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. And again, we are looking at, how do we continue to expand the program, particularly in South County, where we have the most challenge? There's a lot of need, obviously, in North County, um, but South County, there's a whole lot of need down there. People are really spread out. It's really hard to get to people and understand um, the vast need that is really south of Route Thirty. Once you get south of Route Thirty, there's two grocery stores, one in Couch, um.
One in Hebron.
And the one in Hebron, you're right. Yep, I was trying to remember where the other one was. They're so far few between. Um, so, and now there's a Dollar General over in La Crosse that people like to go to, but, um, they're just, you know, food scarcity in this day and age for seniors. It's hard to believe that that's still an issue, but it's still very much an issue. So, we do anticipate being able to use those funds to continue to expand the Meals on Wheels program, um, to better serve the people of this community.
Just so you know, all those funds have to be withdrawn by the end of twenty twenty-six, so.
Yes.
We have to send them back to the.
Yes, we will use them all up, yeah.
You know, Robert, uh, you know, given your organization's, uh, services, which are directly related to the health of our citizens.
Yes, sir.
Have you had any contact or, or connection, uh, with our health department?
Uh, yeah, we did. We worked really closely, actually, with them through the pandemic, especially with, um, being able to get, um, P P E um, equipment and working with them on, um, you know, like what the scale and the scope of the issues were, or when we should, um, bring our staff back. Um, they were an absolute wonderful resource through all of that. Um, but that is, continues to be probably an, uh, an opportunity for us to work closely, um, you know, with the health department on, you know, some of the, the needs and things that they are seeing, particularly with the senior population, so, yeah, that will be absolutely a focus for us.
Yeah, cause that, as, as everybody understands, they've heard that, you know, we have an aging population, so that, that burden is not going to decrease.
No, I mean, when you look at the statistics, yeah, I, I, you know, you could just go to the Bureau of Labor Statistics and see that our county grows at a nice, healthy rate, five, eight percent every year. The age sixty-five and overpopulation has grown by about thirty to thirty-five percent. Um, so we're a rapidly aging community. Uh, you know, the issue with that, too, is we are also, I think, what, the sixth, seventh, eighth, certainly in the top ten affluent communities in the state of Indiana. So, a lot of those for-profit folks out there see that we are rapidly aging, and there's money here, which is, you know, you drive up and down Route Forty-nine, look to your left, look to your right. Something new is popping up in terms of an assisted living, doctor facility, healthcare facility, so, um, there certainly is a lot of need here.
Yeah, the V N A truly does, they fill a void that government has not picked up and, uh, taken responsibility for, and it's, and it's, you know, I've had a front row seat, fortunately or unfortunately, depending on how you look at it, uh, at least on two occasions of how well you go about your business. It is, is, it is about the most, um, it, it just gives, uh, what I, what I see is it, it, it allows those individuals to die in a very peaceful, uh, you know, well-cared-for, uh, you know, uh, place, uh, whereas they may have been home.
Right.
It's somebody caring for them that didn't know what they're doing.
Right, yep.
It makes it, you know, it's just.
Appreciate that.
But it's, 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 it's really, I mean, if it were up to me, and I don't mind saying, if it were up to me, part of the tax dollars would go to fund that, if it were up to me. Um, I think it's just, it is filling that much of a void.
I appreciate.
It's, and that's, that, that burden is going to just increase, uh, as time goes on. So, but thank you so much for, for taking the time to come down here and, uh, uh, to look at what you do here recently.
I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Whatever you, help you may need in the future.
I appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you. Facilities, Joseph? They got you down here, Joseph?
I know, so formal.
Get a notice, uh, to bidders for the Porter County Parking Garage Project, uh, first phase repairs and, uh, preservation?
Yeah, so last year, um, the county, um, commissioned a, a condition study, uh, from American Structure Point. Um, they went through and did an assessment over the whole garage, um, and then came out with some recommendations, um, on some phasing of uh, some repairs that are needed. They gave us a cost estimate, stuff like that, so, uh, we move forward to have, um, notice bidders, uh, put out, so, um, this would be, uh, the specs and plans, uh, for this would be completed, um, by October eighth. Uh, we plan on having a pre-bid conference on October ninth. Um, looking to, uh, have this out for bid, um, and then back to, uh, the commissioners with recommendations and award date on December tenth, so we can get this under contract for this year.
Where were the funds? Where were the funds coming from? That are?
Well, we're hoping that at the end of the year, um, whatever we have left in ARPA funding, and then potentially any other, maybe from, or any other funding-
Scraping together.
Or, or dipping into bond two, because this actually was listed in bond two, but we want, we don't know what this is gonna cost, and we're trying to get a cost for that.
And this is a project that we're basically ready to go with. It's shovel-ready.
And we know that-
I just wanna make sure there's a-
Yeah.
Plan A, B.
Yeah, yeah. And the other thing, too, we know from when, uh, Structure Point gave us this recommendation last year, is that this is gonna add twenty years to that garage, and at that time, it was like four hundred and four thousand dollars. That seems like a really good return on our investment, so.
And we'll have additional repairs five years down the road, another five years down the road, so, and then five and a ten-year, so.
Well, I move that we approve issuing a notice to bidders for the Porter County Parking Garage Project Number One Phase of Repairs and Preservation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Uh, American Structure Point Proposal for Professional Engineering Services in the amount of thirty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
And this, uh, goes hand in hand with that, so this is the P S A for, um, the design construction consultant, uh, on the project.
I move that we approve the proposal for professional engineering services with American Structure Point in the amount of thirty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Um, real quick, how did we do on the popcorn fest?
We made seven thousand? Thank you. Nine, ninety-five dollars.
That's, we usually make, yeah.
Women in the money.
Yeah. We, we, we had a over-aggressive sheriff, uh, directing people away from us at the beginning, so we probably lost a few to the ten-dollar mudslide, so next year, we'll do better, cuz we're gonna sell popcorn.
He's supposed to be on our team.
Exactly.
Well, you know, this, real quick, Joe.
Mm-hmm.
This is probably one of the most underrated projects that we have, um, you know, that we're, we're, we're currently managing right now. I mean, to replace this garage.
Millions.
Millions.
Yeah.
Uh, and, uh, it's one of the most, uh, that we have on Structure Point, uh, square footage-wise, it's, it's one of the most expensive square footages to, to spend, spend on. Anything we can do here to prolong that life is, is really in our best interest.
Yeah. I would agree. Absolutely.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Auditor Karen Martin.
I'm gonna have Ryan come forth and explain the situation with this. He's our Director of Finance and Budget.
Yeah, we have a notice of adjustments to that assessed values for Conservancy District pertaining to the following. Uh, go ahead.
Hi, uh, so per Indiana Code, any adjustments to the county's certified net assessed values made after August first submission deadline require advertisement and announcement at a public meeting, this being that public meeting. The following net assessed value changes have been made to four Conservancy Districts. The Indian Boundary, Indian Boundary Conservancy went from eighty-five million, eight hundred and twelve thousand to ninety-five million, one hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred. Valpo Lakes Conservancy went from three hundred and thirty-eight million, five hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred to three hundred and forty-five million, eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred. White Oak Conservancy went from sixty-seven million, two hundred and ninety-two thousand, nine hundred to sixty-seven million, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred. The Twin Creeks Conservancy went from six hundred and fifty-one million, eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred dollars to six hundred and fifty-nine million, two hundred and one dollars, two hundred and one and seven hundred dollars. Uh, a roll call is not technically, um, needed, but if you wanna take one, you're more than willing to.
What, what's caused the?
So there was an adjustment in one of the columns, and so, once we submitted, we recognized that adjustment afterwards, and so in order to open the gateway, eh, back up and change these, we have to do a public hearing.
Just one?
Yep, just one.
Okay.
I don't accept it, or if you want a roll call. I don't personally feel it's necessary. I mean, it is what it is, right?
Yep.
I bet we just do the roll call vote, uh, cuz we're here. Go ahead. Go ahead, Karen.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Regness?
Yes.
Commissioner Blaney?
Yes.
Free zero.
Thank you.
Except did we make a? If we do the whole motion and stuff?
Uh, that's all we do, is we don't need a motion. Correct? Alright, Ryan, come back up. Let's have a motion to approve and then have the roll call.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Government. Morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
I'm good.
What you got?
So the State Fire Marshal came through the day before the fair, and-
Of course.
Yeah, every year, and it's hopeless. So, there were, um, some issues, and F E Moran came in to address, they'll need to address those issues. Most of it is on the, the fire department hookup in Expo East, and then the fire suppression line in the, the link, which is the tunnel that goes between west and east. So these are two different proposals to get us up to code with the State Fire Marshal.
I move that we approve the two proposals with F E Moran to address issues noted during the annual inspection of the Expo Center in the amount of five hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars, and five hundred and ninety, five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Sure.
And four thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Okay. Second.
She make her do it again.
Now she correct.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good day. Uh, Development Stormwater Management, uh, Mike Javo, Director. Morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
What you got for us?
Okay. I have two items in front of you.
What is the Lockmiller Group, uh, Inc. Amendment Number One Design Services for Bridge Number Ninety-Nine? Increase fee from five hundred and twenty-one thousand, eighty dollars to five hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars.
Yes, this is for the bridge design. There was additional environmental work as part of the process, since we're using federal funds. It's a net increase to the project, twenty-five hundred dollars. Staff recommends approval.
We do this individually. Yeah, we do a minute.
They're both-
We approve, uh, Amendment Number One Design Services for Bridge Number Ninety-Nine, uh, with the increase to five hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and eight, with Lockmiller Group.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
And just to add, for the record, everybody uses bridge numbers, and I'm still learning them, but for the record, Bridge Ninety-Nine is County Road Four Hundred North over Salt Creek.
Okay. Thank you. And we have a Lockmiller Group, uh, Inc. Construction Engineering Services Agreement for Bridge Ninety-Eight, not to exceed two hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars.
This also is a federal project. This is County Road Six Hundred North, again, over Salt Creek and Portage Township. It is for the construction engineering. Again, this is gonna be federal funds, eighty-twenty split. Project could be let, uh, first of January, January, but it's good to get these things out of the way well in advance, uh, as per indots request. As you said, it's not to exceed a amount of two hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars and zero cents. Staff recommends approval.
I move that we approve the Construction Engineering Services Agreement for Bridge Number Ninety-Eight, not to exceed two hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars with Lockmiller.
Second.
We have a motion for approval and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Where, where's that, uh, road is that bridge on?
Six Hundred North.
Six Hundred North.
In, um, you, Portage Township.
Right.
In Portage meet.
Oh, okay, so it's south of Salt Creek. Alright.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, we have a request to use the northeast corner of the courthouse grounds on Saturday, October fifth, from eleven-thirty A M. until one P M. for a peaceful rosary rally. There will be a three-by-twelve-foot banner, which will state prairie, per- prairie?
Pray.
Pray. I'm sorry. The Rosary for America, one, two-by, uh, three-foot table, and a twenty-five to thirty people, or twenty-five to thirty people are expected to be in attendance.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Uh, any other matter which may properly come before the Board of Commissioners? Anybody like to speak? Yes, sir. Better be good news.
It is good news. It's actually just information.
Alright.
Just piggybacking on the conversation earlier about camera project, Sheriff's Department. Um, Genetek software is proprietary, but it works with a vast number of camera systems and such. Um, he, as Scott McClure alluded, I'm moving all of our camera systems to Genetek. Uh, one of the reasons is when you think of a camera system, you think of somebody staring at a, a screen, watching what's going on, or you can pull from recorded video. Uh, the Genetek system is smart enough that if somebody will walk in with a gun, it would alert you, it would recognize that gun. Um, it will, if somebody says, hey, I saw somebody with a blue jacket that looked suspicious, it will go through all of the cameras and pull anybody who's had a blue jacket on at that time. Um, if there's a hostage situation, if there's a person with a gun, we can have the Sheriff's Department, we can have the SWAT team tap into our system and look at those cameras. It's not just closed in. So there's a lot of benefits to it, and it is not fully proprietary.
Okay.
Put a throw in those two cents.
That was helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak to the Commissioners?
Before you close.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I talked to Jesse Buck, who's been in charge of our, um, internet, I can't think of the name of our committee, to get more people hooked up.
Right.
Broadband. Um, and there will be a letter coming up that we need to put together and sign. He'll give us the template for the next round of funding.
So he, yeah, we haven't dealt with that in a while.
No, there, there's, right now, um, spending the last grant and making moves to get people connected. This will be the second phase.
Alright.
But, yeah, it's been in motion. People are getting connected.
Anything?
Yep.
No? Melanie? Scott?
I'm good.
Karen? Thank you all for attending. You're gonna tell me your vote. I, I know.
That is a-
She's gonna tell me your-
Forty-two minute meeting.
Forty-two minute.